Welcome. I think we need some candidates. So now, if you have a flagrant up here, would you join us across the podium? And if I'm not mistaken, we have one. Someone join us on Skype tonight as well. Very impressive. Thanks to college for being so cooperative in setting us up this evening. And what will start first is introducing our candidates from all of the various places on Collin College Trustee Board. We did have one cancellation right before the meeting today because of a conflict. Close your ears. I don't want this to screech in them. There you go. And I haven't tested this little clicker yet, so we'll see how this works. I see Fred Moses down there at the end of the table, who's running for place one. Give Fred a hand. Had a pleasure meeting Jerry Chambers recently as well, running for place two. We have Nancy, Nancy Worsman, joining us on Skype for place two as well. And then Dr. Raj Menon for place five. So we have four candidates. Only take one minute and give us a kind of review of our ground rules for the evening. Where are my ground rules for the evening? Okay, as you can see, four candidates, three president and one on Skype. So we want to be judicious with our time this evening. We want to do an opening statement for each candidate of two and a half minutes. Two minutes, 30 seconds. Now, hopefully, we're being judicious because we're going to give you guys a chance to ask questions in the end. Isn't that the best questions? Two minutes and 30 seconds for an opening statement for each candidate. And then we have two rounds of questions. We'll have a kind of an entry round where we have eight questions. Each candidate will be given three minutes to respond. You're welcome to take all three minutes, but don't feel compelled to. And then we're going to have what I call a lightning round. And there are six questions in the lightning round. And this is the intent of lightning round. We're not trying to make it complicated. It's a yes/no question. If you feel compelled to, you could say pass. If you try to add to your yes/no question, I will be rude and have to cut you off. So round one, three minutes. Round two, lightning, yes/no or pass. And then finally, to all of you, first, thank you for being here. This is what it's all about, being an activist and getting engaged in the community and deciding for yourself. Understand, this is not intended to be exhaustive. So you're here and they're here. Feel free to meet these candidates, get their card, go visit their website and ask more about it. I'm sure each one of them would love to talk to you after the meeting. And I'll see if I can, there we go. There's our rules. And then finally, how are we going to do this time limit? Where's my time key? All right. Fifteen seconds. Is that right, Steve? Fifteen seconds. You'll get a yellow card saying you have 15 seconds left. And then he'll show you a red card. That's when I would really appreciate you stop talking. With that, let's start with our first question. I think I have them on our slide. And we'll try to alternate. Fred, would you like to go first for us tonight?
What questions are we giving?
Oh, you know what? Would you like to do an introduction to the folks tonight? You would. Fred, can you do your two and a half minute introduction? Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. I am Fred Moses. Been in this county a long time and a great supporter of the college. I'm a graduate of the community college some 35 years ago. And I realized the value, importance of this work that the community college does. And so I'm a big proponent. And that's why I've been, over the years, have been a great supporter all over the last 25 years since its inception. I think the college, it has a great mission in terms of service and discounting. And the, and it's done a great, the presidents we've had over the years have, you know, have each added something to the college that has made it the outstanding institution that it is today. I have extensive background in serving on boards and commissions locally and throughout the state. And what I hope to do is bring that experience and that, and work with the other trustees to try and continually help the college grow and be the great outstanding institution that it is. So that's what, that's what my interest is and why I'm running. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all so much, for all of you who've gathered this evening to put this forum on. Really appreciate your time and efforts. My name is Jerry Lanfear Chambers, and I'm running for Collin College trustee, place two. Growing up in Richardson, Texas, one of my great role models is my mother. She was a office careers instructor at Richardson College. And learned from her and her great stories from her about the impact that she was able to make in her classroom on students, particularly those students who came with a family crisis, either an unexpected divorce or unexpected death of the family, and folks who really needed to have a way of making it a better place with their families. And so she was a real model and really turned me on to being very passionate about education. And I consider it my life's work to be an educator. I taught math at various levels for 12 years, and I have a master's in educational administration supervision. I'm passionate about this college. And I'm passionate about the impact Collin College has on its students and on our county. I believe I will make an exceptional trustee. I'm an educator. I'm also a civic leader. I have been very involved in many entities, but the two I'm most proud of, as I'm a founder of SciTech Discovery Center, it's a hands-on informal learning center in Frisco, Texas. I was one of the founders of it and helped to run it for many years. I'm also currently the president of an organization called Plano Youth Leadership. And it is an organization for high school sophomores to give them leadership training and community impact, to have them understand the importance of giving back in the community. I've served on multiple boards across the county, and I know full well the role of the trustee, and I will be mindful of that role at all times. As a trustee, I will do the following. I know the vital role teachers play in the classroom and will support faculty and staff to academic excellence so that we can expand the reach and our students and give them the best opportunities we can. I will serve as a voice for the taxpayers and one of the fastest-growing counties to ensure fiscal responsibility continues. I will also keep a vision on the college's vision of a brighter student, brighter future for students. A vibrant college contributes to a vibrant community. And I hope that you will support me and vote for me, Jerry Chambers, for Collin College trustee.
Ms. Worsman, if you can hear me? Right ahead. Yes?
I'm from Denver, where I take care of my daughter. I'm Nancy Worsman, and I'm a Collin College Board and Trustee. I've been privileged to serve on the board since 2010, and I've been a supporter since 2013. My husband and I have lived in Plano for 34 years, and we raise our three children here. We all understand the benefits of having a college. It helps drive economic development and provide an opportunity for residents to make better lives for themselves. What some people may not realize is the role that Collin College Board plays in making that happen. As a member of the board, I've advocated against raising taxes and keeping tuition low and helping to reduce the high cost of tech costs. Decisions we've made as a board have helped our residents get the education and training to have well-earned careers in the community. We've been voting policies that allow our residents to have a quality higher education taught by world-class faculty. We've minimized student debt in full-credit courses for our high school students and classes in fractured tuition at even state universities. Collin County's population is conservatively expected to develop in the next 13 years, and if we far meet the needs of our residents, we must be patient with that look. We were passing a ambitious five-year master plan, building new campuses and creating and welcoming programs to expand our technical workforce. As we implement the master plan, it's important to have experienced trustees who know how the college works and how the pieces fit together, because the devil really will be in the details of how we execute our ambitious goals. As a member of the board, I committed to the community of funding growth with the tax base and not new taxes on current residents. So expanding our fiscal footprint will need to be carefully managed. I read the board and sent a skill to the board. I have an MBA in risk and financial law in school, where I learned the skills to understand tax, revenue and bond issues. As the only trustee and the only attorney on the board, I have a deal with expert teams that have time to prove value. Most importantly, I have an education degree and seven years of experience in education policy and an understanding of how this complex institution functions. In 2010, I campaigned on a platform of affordability, accountability, accessibility and transparency, and I delivered on all of them. In addition to fighting taxes and tuition laws, I've been a strong advocate that all board business be done in the public other than what's prohibited by Texas law. My experience has proven record shows that I have put a stake to make a difference. And I'm Nancy Worsman, and I ask you to vote on May 6th for the Collin College Board and trustee in place two.
Dr. Menon, before he speaks, I'll give him a shout out. He does not have an opponent, so we appreciate him being here to share a question.
Thank you. I'm going to stand, as I can see my friend Chris Hill in the back. Good evening and welcome. Thank you all for being here. My name is Raj Menon, and I am currently a trustee of the Collin College in place five. I was appointed to the board to fill in a vacancy in October of last year, October of 2016, by unanimous vote of the board. And my appointment is until May, so I have the pleasure of running for election in May. And I have the added pleasure of being out of post, so that's nice. I, unlike these other folks, I will be up for election again in two years, because there's only two years left in the previous trustee's place that I filled. So place five will be up again in 2019. So you'll see me back in 2019. By way of background, I was born and raised in Mumbai, India. And like probably some people here, wasn't born in Texas, but got here as fast as I could. Got here at the tender age of 22 in 1988, so you can do the math, to go to the University of Texas, to go to graduate school there. I eventually ended up getting a master's degree and a PhD in chemical engineering at the University of Texas. 10 years later, I'm a sucker for punishment. I went back and got an MBA. So in a way, I'm a perpetual student. I'm a lifelong learner, you can call me. And moved to Collin County in 1997 with my beautiful wife, who's here, and have stayed here since then. We also have a son who's 17 years old, 17 and a half, will be 18 before the election day, so his first vote will be for his dad. He's a senior at Plano ISD, so that's a little bit of my personal background. As far as work, I've been an engineer, I've been a project manager, and then at some point with my MBA, moved into the dark side of sales and marketing. And, you know, kind of never looked back. I'm an entrepreneur. I have a promotional marketing company that I started about more than 10 years ago, and that's what I do. But I also spend a lot of time in nonprofit organizations. I'm the president of the Plano Symphony Orchestra. I've been on the board of Leadership Plano. I've been on the board of the Medical City Hospital in Plano and several other organizations. And it's my pleasure now to serve on Collin College. Thank you.
So we'll start with our questions, and I'm going to kind of rotate as we start to who it is. There's various things from policy issues to tax and other things. And I think we're going to work with the colors so Nancy can see the timing when the time runs out. First question, if you would start us, Jerry. Collin Colleges, I'm sorry, interviews with college students demonstrate an appalling lack of knowledge about the US government and how it works. How does the Collin College address this and how would you, if any, way, address it as a Collin College trustee?
Well, I think the first thing you need to do is collect data on this and get a measurement of where the college stands. And the faculty council is an incredible source for this college, so I think it's very important to consult them and get their ideas and inputs on how they think that that needs to transpire and maybe corrected. If it needs to be corrected, yes, it says in the US for most college students, but it'd be important to assess the level of understanding of the students that are at Collin. I have a dear friend who's a university or Texas professor, and she says very clearly that she can identify which students in her classroom come to Collin because they set themselves apart from other students. So I think it's very important to start with what we know and where those students are, and then work towards making the appropriate curriculum changes or guidance based on what the faculty council recommends, if there is a need, if the data shows that there is a need, and guide them to help make the decisions that they will have to then implement and encourage that process and continue to follow up and make sure that that increased learning, should it need to exist, happens.
Ms. Worsman?
I'm sorry, I have a couple here with the questions.
I will read it again slowly for you. Interviews with college students demonstrate an appalling lack of knowledge about the US government and how it works. How do you view Collin College's role in this and how would you address this as a trustee?
Well, I think the Collin College role is obviously to impart as much knowledge to the students as possible. We have incredible faculty, and they are instrumental in everything we do that's deliberate in college. But we have to, as trustees, we have to make it a priority to encourage students to get involved. And the students get involved in, you know, in civic life. They're much more likely to be looking at history as well. Sorry. I'm very, so deep actor. So the board, in effect, when I was running for office seven years ago, I had the same experience. I found out that some of the students that I ran into, that I met, didn't understand, not that they didn't understand what it was that we were working for, they didn't understand the importance of the vote. And it's one of the things that I know the college is working hard at, the rock and vote efforts. Another college efforts is making sure that people, the students stay involved. And I've seen an uptick in involvement in the seven years that I've been on the board. So it's something that the students are going to be involved in, the old story about history. If you don't know history, you're doomed to repeat it. And we have a good, we have a good faculty, and I think that government and history should be part of our core curriculum, and they are. So I think that's how we would be invested.
Thank you, Dr. Menon.
Yeah, thank you. With due respect, I would question the premise of the question, whether it applies to students in Collin County or Collin College. So I'm not really sure whether it really applies. A few weeks ago, I was down in Austin with a couple of other trustees, you know, for Higher Education Day, meeting with legislators. And we had, I think, three busloads of students from Collin College that came all the way to Austin to meet with legislators and, you know, understand issues and talk to them. And I was in meetings, you know, with Representative Matt Shaheen as well as many others. And these kids were fairly involved, I mean, these students, I keep calling them kids. I think, I think, you know, to the extent that it is true, you know, the problem needs to be addressed at the K through 12, you know, school level, and I'm sure it is being addressed. I really don't think that this is particularly a topic for a trustee to get involved in. Trustees, you know, my business is, we have fiduciary responsibility for the college. We set policy, and that's probably where government involvement can come in. And then we, you know, hire that guy, the president, and have him run, and, you know, he hires the faculty and, you know, they run the establishment. And if there is an issue, I think it's an issue that the faculty should be aware of and would be aware of. And I'm sure the class of quality of faculty that we have here in Collin College, I'm sure they're doing everything necessary to address the question. As a trustee, as far as policy, do I support students learning about the government? Absolutely. Do I see that? I think, I think this millennial generation, my 17-year-old, is extremely involved in government, in fact, more involved. I think the problem is not just with college students, it's with adults. We have 6% turnout at our elections. And I think it's great to see people here, you know, and grassroots movements all over the country that are getting engaged. And, and so, you know, I would like to see 70% turnout at elections. As a, as a candidate, it gets expensive to, you know, campaign when 70% of the people are involved, but that's really how it should be. These elections are far too important, and I think people are starting to realize that. And as they get engaged, they will get involved and they will get educated. So that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
I think the, what meets the, I agree with the other trustees in terms of if it really is an issue, you know, from the interviews with the students. I've seen over the last 10 years of doing, in particular, during Dr. Isher's era, I saw more engagement at the college, more involvement in different, different communities and different issues. So I, I, I think that's, that's been an initiative that has been, been started by President Curry. And I think that in particular, if we wanted to get them more involved in knowing more about our government, then there may be things that the administration should be doing to have the students involved and government active or engage them in fun things that will help them really connect with understanding how government, how it works. And then also, in this, in Collin College, I think we, we have a lot of elections. You can't say enough for a lot, a very engaged community. And maybe there's some way that the administration in the college could get more of our elective officials and the student body connected so that they could be more engaged. And in particular, addressing the needs of learning, standing more, more about government, learn more about our state and how the legislative work, and then also more about our national leaders. And I think that what I've seen from our, the people that are elected to office here, and they're, they're very open to working with our, with our community and giving back to, if there's an issue. So I would think that it would be an initiative, more so on the, on the part of the administration working with, engaging. And if this is a, is a particular problem, then we should get the information that is a problem and then identify how, and get more of us that are in the community engaged and how we can help the college and their studies.
Going off script, how many students are there at Collin College? Does anyone know? 2,000. So just an observation, it just gives you context of that question. I only see two people under the age of 22 here, and one of them can't vote. All right. Question two. And we're going to go with Ms. Worsman to start us off. Collin College is one of the four taxing entities within the county. Should the college tax rate remain the same, be raised or be lowered? And what limitation would you be willing to place on annual, on annual budget increases?
Well, as I said, as I said earlier, the college is, has committed to funding the growth that's in our master plan, not by raising tax rates on current residents, but by growing the tax base and using the taxes from the growth. I don't think that we should be raising tax rates because I think that we have the luck, I call it the luxury, that we have good fortune to be able to build, to be able to grow the college on and without raising tax rates. So I think that's, that's important. We can't be spending money wildly, even in this, you know, we have $600 million of bonds that have to be on this, on this ballot as well. And there are a lot of fiscal responsibility that goes with this $600 million bond. So we're not going to sell them all at once, so not going to be a question of everything happening, paid once and paid back. But we have to be fiscally responsible when we have the growth. So if we don't have these taxes on our, our residents, no, we do have that, the luxury, we have the good fortune of having a great tax base. And I think I may have missed the rest of the questions. So if you want to.
Yeah, no, certainly. And really, the point is, would you keep the tax rate the same? Would it be raised or would it be lowered? And would you be willing to place any limitation on the, what would you place on the annual budget increases?
Yeah, there is, there's already a limit that we have. There's a statement that we have as to how high we could raise it, but we don't want to raise it at all, unless seven years that I've been on board. We have to raise the tax rate at all. And it's important for our college to grow, you know, it's one, it's, we pay taxes, and the taxes that we pay go to increase the assets that the county has. The county is reaping the benefits of those taxes, because we build facilities that are, and we build programs that, that, that call on residents and make the county's tax base, they actually improve the county's tax base, because we don't part of what attracts or corporations to the county. So I think that the answer, the simple answer, really, I don't want to increase taxes, I don't think we should increase tax rates. And I don't think we have to do, we have to do what we do have to grow.
All right, thank you. Dr. Menon?
Yeah, I think our tax rate is .08122 cents per $100 valuation. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, we have the second lowest tax rate of all the community colleges in Texas. And we're one of the highest-quality institutions in that arena. So I think we have a lot to be proud of. And as trustee Worsman just mentioned, we are fortunate in that we have a growth problem to deal with. What that means is, well, we have to plan and prepare and do things in order to account for that growth. But at the same time, we have a growing property base, tax, taxable value, so we don't really have to increase our tax rates. I think even with various projections that we have in the, in the bond proposal, we're not going to increase the tax rate. So I don't see there's a need to do that. I think we are fortunate, as I said, with the, with the underlying property values increasing. And what we really have to be concerned about is investing that money prudently and being fiscally responsible so that we are actually using that money to prepare and, and get our, our college ready for the growth that's tremendously coming down the road. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
Okay. We're on our current tax rate. I, I recently looked at the budget for the college over the last three years. And the operating budget, for the first year, there had been a deficit. The other years, there had been a slight surplus of revenue taken in versus what was spent out. That to me tells me that we're, we're, we're living on a very, a kind of very conservative type budget, and we're budgeting pretty, looks like we're budgeting responsibly. And so as a result of that, I think that it would be, and then also as a businessman, I think we continually, where we have an environment where we have tremendous growth taking place, and we need to meet the growth, and we want to keep the quality of the college high in terms of meeting the standards, and also making it attractive for, for, for our students and our community to take advantage of it. So based on those trends, I don't see a need that we, we need to, also, I'm, I'm, as a fiscal conservative, I would I'm, as a fiscal conservative, I would not wanna be raising taxes either. I think we're, we're, we have tax, the rate that we have now, the similar, that gets meeting our needs. And then also these, the other needs that we have in terms of this growth, we shouldn't, we shouldn't put that at risk by maybe doing politically or something in terms of taxes. But the smart thing to do, I think, as trustees, is to be prudent in terms of meeting our growth, meeting the needs of the colleges and, and being financially responsible doing that. And it seems like the trustees that, that have been in place over the years and have done a responsible job, and when we look at the budget, we look at what, what the spending trend has been over the last three years, you know, when you look at the budget. So that's why I think the, the type, the type rate looks reasonable to me. And also, I think the other issue that we have to deal with as we grow and we really wanna meet the needs of the college with the funds that we have. Thank you.
Chamberlain?
Well, I don't wanna be redundant, but the growing tax base is certainly growing with the growth of the county. The college is in a very enviable position because we get to access the entire county, which is different from a municipality, you can only access the tax base for that particular city. To give you some context to Dr. Menon saying the tax rate, if you have median house in Collin County is about three hundred thousand dollars. And if you have that size house, your plan is gross rounding, by the way, but you're paying about two hundred fifty dollars a year to support the college. That's, that's in a very, very low amount. However, as the base is growing, it seems reasonable to look at how the tax rate could be lowered to compensate so that taxpayers are not increasing the amount that they pay, but it stays about the same. Does that make sense in terms of? So I think it's a responsibility of the trustees to look at any way they can possibly can to make the best budget. In the context of this, the college has six core values and one of those values is academic excellence. I think it's a responsibility of the trustees to make sure that academic excellence and then, and the second, one of the other values is learning the environment, making sure that that is robust and exciting and rigorous for our students. At the same time, looking at how we can do it in the most efficient way and the most cost of, cost for taxpayers.
Thank you. Now, check me if I, it's, it messes with me when I see three people and I look back and like, I wanna make sure I don't, I don't skip Mrs. Worsman's point, so you guys are the police. So we started with Mrs. Worsman on that question. We'll go to question three and, and just in case you were, we're revisiting that question, that issue in a different format than question five. So bad news. Uh, question three for Dr. Menon. College and university political science curriculums across the U.S. are promoting anti-capitalism and socialism. Is this being properly addressed within Collin College curriculum? And how much influence, if any, can the trustees have over content which is being taught in the classrooms?
Um, I'll be honest, I have not been on the board long enough and I haven't paid attention to the, to the curriculum, but I think it would be ridiculous that we wouldn't support capitalism or we wouldn't, you know, it's, it's not the best form, but it's, you know, it's better than anything else. So that's, 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 you know, that's, that's my understanding. Uh, as far as the, what, what was it, the trustees do anything about it?
Yeah. So the question obviously is, sometimes you guys aren't gonna agree if this is a trustee question at all. Just give you an opportunity, is, is this an issue and should the trustees do anything about it if it is?
You know, my, my perspective on that is again, leave the education to the educators. Uh, you know, that's, that's what we do in, in hiring the, the, the president and, and the excellent quality faculty that we have. Uh, you know, I think we'll leave the curriculum to them. I, being a trustee, we come from a lot of different places. Uh, we have a lot of different backgrounds and certainly, you know, meddling in individual curriculum, I don't believe is probably the best user or, you know, the best role for a trustee to be, so I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
Well, I, I, I agree with Dr. Menon's saying that, uh, and that issue, I think it's more of a administrative issue. I think the trustees have physical and policy type, uh, issues that they deal with and actually, and hold the administrator, the, the president, uh, responsible for making sure that we have, we provide a, a quality education and a, a physically responsible education for the, for the students that are, and then, uh, and, and the other part, I think that the, the trustees have to do is when they're hiring an administrator, and I think that over the years, uh, the college trustees have done that. They have hired, they are responsible leaders in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the president of the college and they have done a good job in, in directing us in a physical and a responsible way. And, uh, so I would, again, and we've had some outstanding recognition for what, what the college has been doing with their, with the faculty. And so I, I think it's, uh, it's prudent also that we, as trustees, we should stay about in our lane in terms of what we're, what we're responsible for in terms of policy and then let the administrator continually, uh, let the college, the faculty strive and, and produce good, good and bright students so that they'll have an enriched future education to go out and be productive citizens of the, of our community and the workplace.
Chambers?
I agree to what the other panelists have said. The role of the trustee is to hire the administrator who makes his decisions in terms of what's happening in the classroom and making sure that it's high quality. I will say though, that the college has another core value of respect and dignity. And I think that's intended for all human beings, but I also think it's important for us to respect and dignity for all forms of thought. That means that this is an institution of higher learning and students should be equipped with knowing, uh, knowing all information and that's what this is about. And so I think that's a very important piece, but that is up to the administration to make sure that that is happening in a way that again, has academic excellence.
And then Mrs. Worsman?
Okay, lastly, to manage to go in last, I was, I was gonna say the same thing that Derek just said. Um, we, as, the college has a mission and part of the mission that we set, all those are core values and I was gonna say exactly one, they need respect. Now, we should, we should be encouraging critical thinking and critical thinking includes that we need to hear all different points of view. We shouldn't necessarily be advocating for any points of view, nor should the faculty. They should be giving information, they should be putting out all opinions to let the students make those decisions for themselves. If we don't expose those to the different points of view, they're gonna have a much more narrow vote. So I think that, you know, we, we do have, the board does have a role in setting the mission, which is to, to make sure that our students do engage in critical thinking, that's part of what we do, and the core values of respect. Now, the other thing that we do as a board is when we, when we work on the faculty contracts each year, the faculty are responsible for doing some things that our colleges require. One of those is to continue, continually be part of civic engagement in the community and the others to have professional development. And they don't let their contracts renew unless they have, you know, they, they do things that make them develop and grow. And we want the student, them to grow, we want them to help the students grow. So I think the board does have some role in it, but as, you know, other people have said, we hire the administrators, the administrators have hired the faculty. We just set a tone in some ways.
Thank you. Before we go, just to note, I heard a straight-up thought on some of the questions, note, our question actually noted that anti-capitalism and socialism is being promoted, not allowed. And that is kind of the distinction, so thank you for that. Uh, Dr. Mo, Mr. Moses, we're gonna go next, it's question four. The college, the college has proposed six hundred million bond election. Let's change that question. The college has proposed six hundred million bond election is planned as a single bond election rather than splitting it between individual proposed projects. As currently packaged, the bond would provide enormous latitude to trustees on how to spend the bond funds with no further voter approval for the six hundred million bond amount. The question would severely restrict taxpayers' input into the use of funds going forward. Do you agree with the position and why? And would you favor future bonds being broken into separate projects similar to the way cities do like the most recent City of McKinney bond package?
Let me see, recently I worked on the, the bond package for PISD and one of the issues that we had about coming up with the bond is that whether, in terms of how much breakout we would have, uh, you know, I, I'm, as a fiscal conservative, I would've been, I would, I would've been more in favor of, of breaking the bond, breaking the bond up, you know, and maybe in, in terms of, uh, giving the taxpayers, you know, taxpayers more of an opportunity to, I'm, I, I think the bond is necessary because we, the, the college is growing, but I would've been in more in favor of at least, yeah, uh, working it up to maybe two or three different options so that you as the taxpayers would have some more say in terms of how that, 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 that bond package would, would, would be spent, you know, because it does. You've had some, but on the other side, I think the trustee, the, uh, the trustees that we've had in the past have, hopefully been very responsible. And then you have to continually try and break, like those of us that are in the future trustees, that certainly will be open to giving you, the taxpayers, much, as much information as possible about the direction of the bond and where we're going. But it is a, you know, it, because it's a, it's a, a big bond, big, big amount. But the college has some, some tremendous responsibilities in terms of where growth is growing in this county and the college need to be in a position to go ahead and, and, and make some decisions. And the, but the latter, you know, as far as my position would've been, is I would've loved to have seen maybe it's, uh, it broken up a little bit more. I don't know that the college has made a decision, I don't think they, hopefully, that as trustees on the bond, we will not spend all the bond, all, we will not sell all the bonds at one time. We will sell, hopefully sell the bonds as gradually the needs are to, to fulfill the needs of the college, whether that's the renovations that they're doing, our building new campuses, but hopefully we will break it out in the, as in terms of how we should sell the bonds. And also the other question that I asked recently, if we're selling the bonds, if we, do we have any bond balances now? And there's very, there's about a fifteen dollar, million dollar balance in the, in bond now. I, I was told that the, the bond, uh, the bond, outstanding bond balance will not go any higher than the, the six hundred million dollars that, that has been posed. But, uh, and I think that's, again, we're not increasing that, but we'll be able to hopefully manage any debt within a reasonable, reasonable expectations.
Thank you. Chambers?
This is an excellent question. And my first response would be, you know, absolutely, the people need to have a choice. It'd be great for them to have that perspective and being able to say what parts of the bond they want to be for or not. At the same time, the trustees have a responsibility, they are serving the entire county. And our population concentrations in the county are not even. So that if we're wanting to service, um, half our, half of the geographic part of Collin County is north of three eighty. Um, and, and so if, if you're a voter in Allen or Plano or the part of Frisco that's below three eighty, you're gonna vote for those things that are gonna be only serving those areas. And we've got a growing community in Prosper and Salina that the trustees made this decision and clearly I wasn't at the table making this decision. Um, they have data and they have information about growth that perhaps, you know, not everyone is, has privilege to. So it's, it's a tough question to answer. Um, I think that, you know, I, I understand that those places that are not as populated would not be, probably get those services. So I think it's something that you have to be looking at, again, the data, the projections, and the trustees, they are voted to, be put in office to make those hard decisions and those hard calls. And so I think that it's an important piece for you to put your faith and, and belief in someone who's gonna be making those hard calls and those hard decisions and knowing when is it appropriate to break that bond apart and when is it appropriate for it to be all inclusive in one, in one vote.
Thank you. Ms. Worsman?
You know, we are elected by the community and there's no question, and we have put forth a big vision for what higher education is going to look like in this community or what we think it should look like in this community. And there's no question that by selling the bond six hundred million dollars and asking the community to trust us, we are asking for a lot. That is a lot. However, the track record of this board has been so stellar, and I'm not saying my, my track record, but the track record of the board in all of the time that this college has been in existence has been so responsible and they've spent the money of this college, of the community so responsibly that I think that the ask for, asking us, asking you to trust us is, you know, is warranted. The second thing is, if you don't trust us, then you have the chance to vote us out. I mean, that's what we are. We are, we are voted in by the community and the community thinks that we're going in a direction that isn't prudent, then you have the opportunity to go to the polls and vote those trustees out. One of the other things that is important that I hope things to mention is that we have a committee of a hundred that I think all of the panelists are on, except I'm gonna compliment him on because of being a trustee, but, um, the committee of a hundred is the community who have, we ask the community to give us input on the, on the master plan and on the bond and to help us decide what is, what they think our priorities will be. Now, they don't make those decisions, you, people have custom made decisions, but they're giving us input. So we are here for the community, we're not making the decisions that, of when to sell, of whether to sell bonds in or back. We do have the community for it and it's important.
Thank you. Before you start, real quick, Ms. Worsman, you mentioned committee of a hundred. Is that an appointed committee? Who, who points that committee?
It's actually a committee that was, um, each of the trustees had a chance to nominate people who are community leaders to sort, to sit on this committee a hundred. The committee of a hundred actually turned out to be, I think, one hundred fifty-eight, one and a half hundred, it's not, it's more than one, but these are people who are community leaders and they're people that were known to the trustees and the trustees nominated people to be on it.
All right. So just to be clear, it's a, it's a committee of a hundred that the trustees themselves appoint?
Well, we, we don't appoint them, we not, we, we put their names in the hopper and, you know, they, they are the community leaders. If there were people that wanted to, to be part of it, um, it was public that, that was going on, I would think that there's still room for people, for other viewpoints on it. I don't know, Neil, I'm gonna ask you, you're sitting there, whether or not there's still room for people to, to join. I just don't know that.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Dr. Menon? Thank you.
Okay. Derek, you and I have discussed this issue of the, of the bond line items before when we met and, you know, it's interesting, I'm gonna answer the question in, in different parts, but in principle, I am all in favor of transparency and, and giving the voter control and, you know, having, having them make the decision. However, remember the earlier question we asked and we talked about the six percent pathetic voter turnout? So we're talking about, you know, six percent of the county population and to Ms. Chambers' point, you know, when you have, most of the voters are from the metropolitan areas, you know, Plano, Allen, McKinney, Frisco maybe, you know, you're not gonna have as many voters turning out from Wiley and Farmersville and Salina, which is actually where the growth is happening. Jed South talked about, you know, all the growth coming up with, with three eighty and all the construction and all that. Those, the, the six percent of voters are not representative of the whole county. They're, you know, that's just how it is because the voter turnout is so bad. The second point is, remember, we are a republic form of government. We are, as a trustee... We are, as a trustee, elected representatives. And it is my job to represent the voters that elect me and to be informed and to be educated and to make the decision that the voters would want me to do. And if I don't, you get to fire me, in, in, me in two years and the others in six years. And, and that's how the process works. I think it would not be necessarily efficient for every voter to vote on every issue. The other problem, even if you said, okay, you wanted to break it out, how narrowly would you break it out? Would you break it out into 600 million line items? Would you break it out into 12, 15 million line items? A voter is going to spend 30 seconds in the voting booth and make that decision on, oh, you know, I don't think Salina, I don't even know where Salina is, I don't think we need a campus there. And let me tell you, I've been on the Board of Trustees for three months and three days, and Dr. Mackman will attest, it has been like drinking from a fire hose. I have had so much material thrown at me, I am constantly, you know, up at night reading and learning about stuff. And your trustees work very hard, and I will vouch for that, without exception, everybody does. And, you know, it's not a quick decision. The, the, the plan for the bond has been developed by hundreds of people spending probably thousands of man-hours of time. And, you know, so the trustees are doing their job, what they're supposed to, in making the bond package for the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we've missed anyone on that. Ms. Chambers, we'll start with you on question five, revisit a previous issue and drill down a little bit more. Taxes are paid as a function of appraised value and tax rate. Appraised values have risen 8 to 10% per year for the last five years in Collin County. County population is growing at a 3 to 4% rate. Collin College has made, has made virtually no tax rate decrease, tax rate decrease, despite receiving significantly increased tax revenue, what you folks referenced earlier. Would you favor holding budget increases to the rate of population increase or adopting an effective tax rate? Explain your position.
Do you read that question?
Certainly.
Sounds like good math to me.
As a point of clarification, Lieutenant Governor is discussing this very point on our state budget.
Yes. So... Oh, I dropped my answer, excuse me. I don't know if it is a either or, either an 8% or a 3 or a 4%. I think what's important for the trustees to keep in mind is that we have a growing college system. If the bond passes, we may need to make sure that the academic excellence that the college delivers is still delivered. That I think we have an incredible responsibility to make sure we do it with the amount of funding that is necessary. And the word I want to say is reasonable. It's important that you elect trustees who give great thought and make reasonable choices about that. If there is an opportunity to lower the taxes, given that there's growth, that should be looked at very seriously. What that mathematical number is, is going to be dependent on the data. And, and I've heard me say data several times tonight, and I will say that that's what we need to be driven by, is be driven by that data and look at things very thoughtfully and very reasonably, do everything we can to support the taxpayers who have elected us.
Thank you, Ms. Worsman.
Well, I agree, I agree with a lot of, I almost agree with anything Ms. Chambers said. One of the things that I know is an issue is, do we lower the tax rate to account for the increase in, in, in the increase in the value, the tax rate values? The answer to that is, right now, we are in growth mode, we have to be in growth mode. So in order to keep pace with the growth in the, in the community, we need to have the funds to do that. There is, we, we have a luxury, we talked about, said this before, we have a luxury of unfortunate not to have to break the tax rate in order to have to grow. Now, we, we see our peers around the state of Texas and other places too, we are so much more fiscally healthy, I won't say in China because I'm sure they all are too, but we're, we're healthy because we have the tax base. One of the things that I've seen and that I've advocated for is that we have a, there is a question of tuition. And who pays for the cost of education? What does the tax, what do the taxes actually pay for and what should they pay for? We've had an issue of whether the taxes should go to pay for the cost of instruction or whether that should be paid for by the students and the state, the state appropriations of the students. And that's one way that the work does control keeping the tax rate down is by making sure, and I'm all for students to make the college affordable, keeping tuition low. But I'm also in favor of making sure that our students understand the value of what they're getting and make this a synergy. So tuition is low, it was by a long shot in Texas. And, and even when students can't afford to, to even have that, make that investment, we help them. But the tax rate should be going to increasing our programs and facilities and growing, and which will lead up to the students and the state paying that cost of tuition. So that's one way we have an impact on the taxes that are, the tax rates that are actually being charged. But I think if we're growing, if, if we can decrease the tax rate and still grow at the rate that we need to grow, then I'm for decreasing the tax rate. But if we can't, if, if we need to grow and that's how we need to do it, we do it responsibly. I think that, you know, we shouldn't decrease the tax rate and not increase it.
Thank you. Dr. Minn?
I would say, you know, as I think Ms. Chambers and Nancy Worsman as well said, you know, the, I'm not sure if the math just works out, you know, the, the tax rate to be the same as the population growth rate. Maybe for, you referred to what's happening, the Lieutenant Governor, you know, maybe at the state level where they're talking about $300 billion or something of that order of magnitude, you know, that probably makes more sense. We have a very diverse county. There's a lot of different things happening. There's a lot of growth and density in some areas, not so much in other areas. And so we, we can't necessarily, you know, assume that the math will work out if you stick to the tax rates. However, I will say this, I think our tax rate is really low and it has been low. The last time we had a bond was, I believe, 2001. Dr. Mackman, if you're still here, will correct me.
Correct.
Is that correct? 2001? That's 15 years that we've dealt with, with the, can you imagine, can you, do you remember what Collin County looked like in 2001? I do. And it was nothing like it is today. You know, this was before the, the big companies moved in and before, we're nearly a million people in terms of population. And the reason we've been able to manage that growth is two things. One, because our tax rate has been adequate to, to help us sustain. And, you know, our trustees, you know, over all these years and the administrations have been very diligent about how that money has been used. And so we've planned and we've managed the growth, which is, I think, the challenge going forward as well. So I think, as a trustee, I can say unincorruptly that, you know, we're very conscientious about taxes. Only about 43.3% of our tax, our, our budget comes from taxes. And there's other state appropriations and tuitions and other things that go into it. But we're very conscientious about levying taxes. And we will hear from the people if we're not being prudent and fiscally conservative, I guarantee that. And we don't take that lightly. So I think, you know, that goes without saying, you should hold the trustees responsible if you feel our tax rate is too high. We do have one of the lowest costs in, in, second lowest cost in the, in the state. So we're doing something right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
The tax rate in the, in the revenue that we generated, from the tax rate, recently, I sat down with Dr. Mackman and I, I asked him about what, what was happening with the revenue over the last three years. And from the tax rate, from the tax year, 2013 to 2014, it raised about 182 million. And in 14 to 15, the revenue actually was generated was about 188 million. And in, in 2015 and 2016, the revenue that was, was generated, actually, was 181 million. You know, and then we talk about the generation of what the tax rate is generating. It, maybe, and maybe I don't understand these numbers, but it doesn't seem like it's generating any, any outstanding growth. And as a result of that, I think that's why it's important that we not, not tick around. We, we really want to make sure that the revenue continues to support the growth that we have to keep equality, the quality count of quality college that we have. And so I think all of us are responsible. We all want to look at every dime and, and make the best use of our taxpayers' money. And we want to give you an opportunity to, to reduce our tax rate if we're, if we're getting all this money. But it doesn't seem to be, well, at least on paper here, it doesn't seem to be adding up. And so as a result of that, that's why I think that the, the trustees continually has to be as wise and prudent in terms of how they manage the, the revenue that's coming in. Because at least on paper here, it doesn't even seem like we're getting, you know, oh, you know, that the growth rate is, is matching up with, with the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. And Dr. Mackman gave me liberty to ask him questions on point of fact before the meeting. So I'll ask you a point of fact since we're talking about this. Do you know the percentage increase in the college, colleges' budget last year? Because I couldn't find it on the website. The percentage increase in the budget?
I don't remember.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just as a point of reference.
Just two quick things. The colleges kept the tax rate at virtually the same amount for minimum year. And of course, the rising tax base does raise more revenue. What the college has done is taken that excess revenue rather than just piling into the budget widely. We've taken it and moved it over to a building fund to build for the last two years, 12 years, buildings without having to borrow money. Unfortunately for us, as, as the population is growing at such a high rate, it's not possible to keep up with that, that management longer. So in terms of the budget increase, year over year, the budget's remain virtually flat. When I got here, we had 396 full-time faculty, we have 396 full-time faculty today. We've allocated them a little bit differently to cover more ground. We have seen a 5% increase in students year over year. And so it's, we're not sure we'll be able to do that every year, but so far it's been pretty much a flat operational budget. Any excess going?
I'll change it real quick. Do you know the revenue increase over the previous year?
Probably between eight and 12 million dollars.
Percentage? So we have a context of what the percentage is? And if we don't know, we don't know. I couldn't find it on the website.
I don't know percentage, I'll be honest.
All right. Well, I'm looking forward to see if it's double digits or not, but you guys can check on that. And thank you very much, and I appreciate your, your, your time and that question. And I think we're at Ms. Worsman next on question six. Explain your views on free speech and First Amendment rights as it relates to college campuses. This is intentionally broad, so you can answer as you wish.
No, that one?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I can, I can, let me ask that again for you. Explain your views on free speech and First Amendment rights as it relates, as it relates to college campuses.
No, I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know if it didn't have, it doesn't have the questions. I'm only being honest. I am a free speech advocate. I think that especially on college campuses, everybody should be able to speak freely. I mean, I'm, I'm, that's what, I'm a free speech advocate period. I think that's one of the most important rights that we have as citizens. There are some limits, there are some limits for hate speech, I believe that there should be limits for hate speech. And it should be, you know, you can't, as the old story is, you can't yell fire in a crowded building. So that's, that's certainly not what we want. In terms of discussing issues, in terms of students being able to, to express different points of view, I think that is very important upon college campuses especially. We have students, or at least our students between the, our students that are in the close high school, the 18 to 24-year-old students, their minds are still expanding very fast. And I think that in order to, to do them justice, to present them with the ideas and give them the opportunity to explore them, and some of that exploration is to discuss them with each other. So there, there are things, the only things that I would say should be, there is certain free speech that they should be banned. We've had some very lovely flyers put out on campuses that, you know, that, that speech is, is a risk. But we want, we want to be able to engage our students so that they can, that what we're at right now, and we, you know, we can understand, the students can understand each other, and they can come to some kind of a rational and reasonable appreciation for everybody else's point of view. So I think that, that speech that causes people to engage is good speech, even if it's being the wrong way.
I may have a follow-up on that, but we'll go to Dr. Minn.
Yes, and I will say without hesitation, I'm absolutely in favor of free speech. I was born in the largest democracy in the world, India. I moved and I'm a proud U.S. citizen of the oldest democracy in the world, and free speech is very much a part of that. I think the college should be no different. However, as Trustee Worsman said, you know, there's limits. You can't yell fire in the middle of a crowded theater, that makes no sense. There's no room for hate. I think we have to be very mindful of our core values. And, you know, dignity and respect is something that we instill in students, and we want to maintain that. So I think that is absolutely, absolutely the case. And, you know, I think as, as, as these young adults are exploring different ideas, as we teach them to think critically, broaden their knowledge base, and explore concepts that are different from their own experience, I think it's really important that they get that freedom. But it has to be respectful and civil at all times. We can disagree, and there's probably people in the audience here that disagree with things I say or things the other people say, but we will do it civil, in a civil manner. I just want to like, like, tell a little story. I arrived in Texas in 1988 as a graduate student, and one of the first things that we did, my, my roommates and I, when we were able to afford a colored TV, we switched on the TV. And the first thing I remember watching is a presidential debate. This was George Bush Senior running in 1988. And I was mesmerized and hooked on to CNN, you know, like, I had never seen anything like that. It was just, I mean, this is not really free speech, but the power of discourse, civil discourse, being able to ask questions and, and agree or disagree in a civil manner, I, I think, you know, that was what I was in love with. And I absolutely believe that's what we should have in this country and in the college as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we go on, and you can add if you want, I've heard the phrase, the hate speech twice. You can answer if you want. That, that's kind of the point we're trying to, to drill out. The Constitution actually doesn't define the phrase hate speech, nor does it define in U.S. statute. So who defines what hate speech is? So we'll continue if you'd like to add in, and then Mr. Moses, if you would get next for us.
I'm certainly an advocate of, of free speech. And one of the, you know, programs that I've been involved in here, playing over the, over the years that I've been here, is that I've been involved in community programs and in particular, the Power Breakfast that we have, the college app puts on every year, is, is one of the things that I was founded on. I'm proud to be a part of that. And it's about getting the, getting the community together and us hearing about different point of views of discussing what our critical needs are in this community and how do we best address those. So I'm a big proponent of, of free speech. But anyway, also, I think you got to do it with, with dignity and grace, you got to do it with integrity when you allow that to happen. So that's why I think it's important. And I think those of us that are mature, we really need to be giving our, love people latitude, but also latitude within the parameters of what's free, free speech is, that will also be respectful of others and, and build people up and not tear them down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
I'm going to go out on a limb here. Okay, I'll say it a little different. Now, I completely and wholeheartedly respect the, the First Amendment and the ability to have free speech. I do think it's really important. And this is where I'm going to cross over, which I made a commitment that I would not talk about things that the trustees are not responsible for. But I do think that we're responsible for helping set a climate, I'm assuming, by policy. And I think the dignity and respect is incredibly important. And I think the dignity and respect is incredibly important. But I'm going to extend it a little bit further. You may recall, last fall, I believe it was, there were a group fraternity boys at another university north of here who were videotaped saying inappropriate things about other people. And it was videotaped, it went viral, and the university's response was immediately to kick all those kids off campus. And I wonder if that is teaching anyone anything. Dignity and respect, and these are, these are our institution of higher learning. I think we should take every opportunity to teach that, teach what that looks like, the importance of being able to have free exchange of ideas, and, and further our ability as human beings to disagree, to do it mindfully, and, and do it with respect. So I would say that should something of that nature, a disciplined nature come and force to trustees, which very well could, it was escalated to that level, I would say that instead of those who make, in our minds, core choices about their speech, instead of them necessarily being kicked off a campus, think of ways of which we can make it a learning opportunity, so that everyone on campus can learn how to conduct ourselves civilly, and as the human beings that I think we're all intended to treat each other.
Thank you. I think we started with Ms. Worsman, so Dr. Minnan will go with you on question seven. Totally changed gears. Do you believe the current, do you believe there's current demand for, I think there's a typo in the sentence, so I'm going to fix it on the fly. Do you believe there's demand for courses which demands a physical campus in Salina and Farmersville addressing the, the bond issue?
I'm not sure if the emphasis should be on courses, but I think really the issue's of growing population. And I think Salina is an area that's, that's experiencing growth, that's projected to grow. We've got demographers looking for data, we've got projections on population growth. And I believe we have data that says if a student has to drive more than 20 minutes, they're not likely to go to the college. That's kind of the cutoff. And these days with our traffic, Lord knows it takes more than 20 minutes to go down the street. But having, having said that, I, I think, I think we need to be affordable, we need to be accessible. These are two important things. And part of our mission to take that affordable, accessible education around the community is where our growth in Salina requires an additional campus.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moses?
See, when we look at the data, I don't know that, you know, that I looked at the data, but I think that as, as, when you have the growth that is taking place in our county, and the college trying to be more accessible to communities like Salina and outlying communities, I think the college has to be wisely planned, and the board of directors have to, the board of trustees have to be wisely planned to make sure that they're keeping up with that growth and the growth not overwhelming. And so I think they do need to be living at the, the data with the demographics about where the growth is, is going, and Salina is, is, it's a growing area. And also, we get all these roads that the county judge talked about around the county, we will have explosion coming. So when we talk about this growth that's going to take place in 10 to 13 years, I think we have to be prepared to, to again, meet that growth with being a responsible institution and not letting the growth overwhelm us, but us, but make proactive, take proactive action to stay, stay ahead of the growth.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Yes, sir. My understanding, the bond and its growth is spread out over multiple years, where only part of it is going to be, to be so $100 years in $100, $100 million in 2017, and it spreads itself out. I think it's really important to look at the data, to look at the growth, to look at the transportation needs that our county has, and look at that. My understanding is the technical school that's going to be here at Custer at 121 will be one that's launched first, because that means a greater demand. Wiley, the order, the order follows the growth, in other words. And so I think it's responsibility of the trustees to as the time goes, and as the data either proves or disproves itself, that the trustees adjust. But at this point, I think that, you know, they clearly have looked at the data, and that's, that's, as, as things grow, we'll see if that demand goes with that.
Thank you, Ms. Worsman.
Everything that the board has done in creating this master plan has been data driven. We have looked at populations and trends and up one side and down the other. And we have the situation right now, we say with Salina, that we've got Preston, well, sorry, Wiley, we've got Spring Creek's capacity, full capacity of Spring Creek, where we use 80% of the time. And I think the statistic right now is seniors 89% of the time. So that's a campus that is supposed to serve 7,000 students, and my understanding is right now it is 13 the last time I asked. So the Wiley campus is needed right now to take the load off of Spring Creek, to help light some of that load, and also because Wiley's had a lot of growth as well. Salina, we have gotten, we have the same, not quite the same as Preston Bridge and Frisco, that's where the students from Salina would probably go. And Preston Bridge is getting, getting close to being at capacity. So we definitely need capacity at that size in that age of the county. One of the things that is important to know is that both Salina and Farmersville, I believe were donated, I don't think we paid for the land. And, you know, I know that Salina was a donation. We've got some of the land donated for the Wiley campus as well. These campuses, these tax of land have been, in the college, have, the college has had those tax of land for a long time, as long as 10, 15 years. It hasn't been timed to build. So nothing's been built on them. And even now, we're looking at the population growth. We're looking right now at Salina as being a full campus and Wiley being a full campus fairly quickly, while we're looking at Farmersville, it's, things are growing out there, the population's growing out in that East Center. And what is not there yet, what we're looking for is a starter, a center in Farmersville that will serve that part of the county, because the fact is it's very hard to get in that part of the county anywhere else right now. And Dr. Madden will tell you that he brought it to Farmersville, and the traffic has gotten unbelievable coming in and out there. So we do need to be able to serve students on all ends of the county with the transportation needs. I think that, you know, that we have, we have the needs to build a number of areas.
My dot system on my paper. Thank you. And it's not telling me if I, I gave you an opportunity to answer that. I did, didn't I? Good, thank you. The dot system's working. We are going to go to question eight and, and start with Mr. Moses. This is a question that no one ever cares for, I'll just tell you now, and so I'm going to clarify it, because I asked this in the forum two years ago. The question is, the state of Texas passed campus carry with some ability for colleges to restrict carry in specifically designated areas on campus. What's your view on campus carry, and would you vote to prohibit campus carry in designated areas? We just clarified that some have stated, oh, well, the college doesn't deal with that. Well, state statute provides colleges certain discretion. That's why we're answering, asking this question. Mr. Moses?
Okay, this question, interesting question. I think what we, and campus carry is, we want all of our, our college to be safe and secure, and, and we want to make the best decisions about how to best accomplish that. And, and I think that, you know, as we look at it here at, at, at Collin Camp, Collin College, is that it's an area that I think that we need to get a lot of feedback from our security people, police people, and say, you know, what, what, you know, what should be our decision regarding us being as secure as we can here on college campus. And I think also the legislation is, is, is looking at, trying to redefine that issue of how to best deal with campus carry on the, on, on our campuses. So I would be in favor of us continually getting information about that, working with our security people about what, what the best policy should be about college, campus carry, or college college.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
My understanding is the college will be making a decision on campus carry and implementing that beginning August 1st of this year, so it is an important topic. The, to Mr. Moses's point, I'm not a safety and security person, I'm not trained that way. I think it's very important to talk to those people. Each campus can be very different, depending on how the layout of it is, and, and we have public safety classes for which students are learning how to use a weapon in an appropriate manner for their course degrees. So I think that it's a question that needs to get safety people involved, and it's important for the faculty council, which I believe the university, the college is using faculty council as a resource, and gather all the information from the folks that are there, and then you make a wise and discernible decision about how best to implement the law that is required of the college to enforce, to make it enforce.
Thank you. Ms. Worsman?
I think I'm going to agree with the, the two fellow panelists here. I also am not an expert in, in safety, or not an expert in best practices of keeping a campus safe. I hired a great president who's hired a great chief of police, and I put a different opinion on how to best carry out the discretionary reporting of the law. If the law is the law, we follow the law. And we get the best people we have to help us figure out the rest of what is going to make us safe, because that's what we all want, safety proceedings. It's not, I don't think we look at campus carry in the vacuum. I think we look at it as part of the safety program, or the entire, the safety and security program, for, for all of our campuses and all of our facilities. So I think it's part of the bigger issue, but, you know, I think there is discretion, and, and our police keep, I hope, help bring us to best practices for that safety.
Dr. Minnan?
Yeah, I think, you know, as a trustee, I took an oath to uphold the law, and I will uphold the law, all the trustees will, so whatever is the law, we will uphold that. Having said that, the question was really about the, the flexibility that trustees have in imposing policy that, that tweaks certain portions of that. And I think, you know, a lot of my previous analysts here have, have discussed, safety and security is one aspect, training is another aspect, you know, education and training about what is involved in concealed carry, and, and what measures can we take to make it safe. As, as a, as a common, as a layperson, there's one thing that I do believe, which is a learner or a student cannot learn if they're unsafe, if they feel unsafe. And I would even say, a professor really cannot teach effectively if they're feeling unsafe. And people have disagreements on what makes them feel safe. I think some people feel safe when they have guns, and others don't. And I think that's the matter that needs to be resolved. And I think there's, the faculty council is looking at it, because they're the ones that are, you know, at the ground level. As was alluded, the security folks, the, the police chief, you know, they will all advise, and we will have a recommendation to the board of trustees, and hopefully we'll come up with a solution that makes most sense to most people, and, and be the right thing, but we'll still uphold the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully none of you feel unsafe tonight. There may just be someone that is concealed carrying. I'll clarify, Ms. Chambers made a, a point that there has not been a policy that's been completed yet, but they're working on it now. Okay, thank you so much for your help with that. And the last question, this is a, a shorter one, work with me on this one. I understand that in these municipal nonpartisan elections, you don't have to declare, so we're asking you to voluntarily declare in your own words. Let me read it. In 10 words or less, help us understand your views on federal government. And I might say political philosophy. In 10 words or less, help us understand your views of, of your political philosophy. You're welcome to use single-word descriptors, like your party affiliation, as it is describing your views, communist, for example, sounding like a recent, of what you see in the government's role, or what you see is the biggest problem with federal government today, or whatever you like. And we will start with Ms. Chambers. Thank you.
I know. Okay, hold on.
It's your easiest question so far.
Yes, of course, it's the easiest question. Remedy is always the most difficult.
Using up your 10 words. I'm just.
Yeah.
She knows I'm joking. Thank you.
Yeah, as the timer started.
It really is your choice. We're just trying to get a caption.
I was starting, no. Everybody.
Single word descriptors.
We'll come back to Ms. Chambers.
No, no, no. And two words left. Federal government is responsible for, that's two words. Okay, sorry, two words.
Just your political philosophy.
Political philosophy. In this race. Ten words.
We're about to have to move on.
My political philosophy is...
Here, let me start. I'm a conservative. Dr. Minnan, you go next, and we'll come back to you.
Okay. That's great.
Democracy, good, less government, efficient government, fair government. That's my philosophy.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Mr. Moses?
At five years old, I was trying to tell my mother how to plan a budget. So I'm very, very virgins, I really, some people think I'm cheap, but I'm, I'm, I'm cheap.
Turn me back, Mr. Moses.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right, and Ms. Chambers, if you're ready for us?
Ms. Worsman?
Oh, Ms. Worsman, would you go, Ms. Worsman?
You skipped or anything? Just to go out.
All right, fire away, then we're going to lightning round.
Do you want to answer? Me? No, you, you take this one here.
Okay. Fair, moderate, listener, responsive, caring, always dignity, respect.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Ms. Worsman?
Oh, I can't do that all of the time. Dr. Minnan said small government, to me, is right-sized government. Federal government is a right-sized government. Protecting rights, I can't do it.
That's okay, and we, and you get the point. And we appreciate your efforts, really, not, not trying to catch me. So I think, I think it actually worked the way we wanted it to. Let's go to our lightning round, have some fun. Fred, I'm going to start with you on all these. What we're asking here is a yes, a no, or a pass. There is not any intention to have any gotcha questions, but the four clubs put into these, all these questions. So, question one, Fred, and then we'll just go down the line. Do you support free speech zones on college campuses? Yes, no, or pass?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Pass.
Ms. Worsman?
No.
Pass.
Do you foresee having to support any effort to, to raise the Collin College tax rate during your first term, or the term you're running for? Fred?
Yes.
Do you, do you foresee having to support any effort to raise the Collin College tax rate during your first term?
No.
No.
Ms. Worsman?
No.
No.
Thank you. Fred? I'm sorry, I know Fred. I, I, I'm disrespectful, Mr. Moses. Do you support free two-year college tuition for anyone who wants to attend college? Yes, no, or pass?
Pass.
Pass.
No.
No.
You see, you like these questions, don't you? All right. Do you support expanding the number of online courses that students are currently... Do you support expanding the number of online courses that students are currently able to take? Fred, Ms. Moses?
Yes.
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 All right, this is, this is where the hate speech against Derek is about to begin. Plano adopted an equal rights ordinance late, uh, two years ago, would you be in favor of adopting a similar policy affecting college, Collin College and its campuses?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Worsman?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, and finally, do you believe outside groups, such as nonprofits, should be required to get permission from the political science department for being allowed on campus, or to do events on campus?
No.
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 That concludes all of our questions. What we wanna do is have some time, it's eight forty-five, for a few questions from the audience. Before we go, let me just, uh, quickly, a round of applause for them, because this is... All right, it's eight forty-five, we don't have a great deal of time, let's see if we can entertain two, two questions, and I immediately caught my eye with Mr. Brodsky. Mr. Brodsky?
My question is specifically for Dr. John. Capitalism is defined by Marion Wester as an economic system characterized by private ownership of forms of government or forms of production and distribution. In your answered question too, you said, quote, "Capitalism isn't the best form." What is the best form?
No, thank you, I, I was trying to be facetious there. The, the, the quote, I think it was Winston Churchill who said, "Democracy is not the best form of government, except it's the, it's, it's the only form we know," or, I'm sorry, I'm messing it up. But, it was a tongue-in-cheek, capitalism is the best form, I mean, that was, it was a tongue-in-cheek that I mentioned to say.
Fair enough. Since, thank you, since we asked that, anyone else wanna chime in on that question? You don't have to. All right, tell me your name again.
John.
John, John, would you ask, ask a question for us?
Before my question, where comes the short republic, just say that.
All right.
My question is actually for all of y'all. You have a professor here that supports the Black Lives Matter movement. I wanna know why any of you would support somebody who calls on the destruction of killing police officers and hurting everybody, that wants law and order, as well as the rule of law?
Repeat the question.
What's the question?
Repeat the question, Derek can't hear.
Y'all have a professor here that does support the Black Lives Matter movement. I wanna know why any of y'all would even support any of this, considering they call on killing police officers, our men and women, also causing anarchy and destroying our constitution. Why would any of y'all support this professor here?
I didn't pick any of the questions, but this is a political forum, so there you have it. Mr. Moses, would you like to start?
Well, I'll, okay, I'll start the question, I think, I will, my philosophy, all lives matter, all of, all of the oppression in the Lord's sight, so I'm, I'm, I'm of that faith. And, so that's, that's where I, I think that, you know, we, we need to be focused in on, on the, especially in, in this democracy, and in this country, and, and Collin County, and even in Collin College.
Ms. Chambers?
There are extremes in every line of religion, thought, group, my, my response could be, every name needs to be treated with dignity and respect, and the college should respond in that kind.
Thank you. What we will do is show respect to our panelists, I appreciate the venue. Ms. Worsman?
I think that, if I could hear your question correctly, this is, I, I don't have your...
I'll paraphrase for... Yes, yes ma'am, there, there's a understanding that there may be a professor that supports or is involved with Black Lives Matters, any questions, trustees allowing or supporting that, if I'm paraphrasing it properly, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's a question whether or not the college should allow professors to be part of Black Lives Matter, or is that...
I would say perhaps, you answer it as you wish.
Okay, well, I think, you know, there are different groups that have valid points of view, but they may not be expressing them in ways that we would approve, and I think by engaging equal issues, that we can start to have the groups engage in, engaging in the issues, we start to have the groups take on a more reasoned and reasonable sometimes view, but I don't believe that group that, I, I mean, if you have, if you have to challenge your assumptions, I think we all have to challenge our assumptions, we think, you know, when we think that a group like Black Lives Matter, I know that they, that they have certain, certain things that they wanna see, and, and the fact that, if certain individuals, I, I, I've heard something about killing policemen, I think that, I, I don't mind the standing is that the movement is not anything without that, movement is without ideas, if that's the way certain people advocate for it, I don't advocate, we, we have a professor that's advocating on our campuses for killing policemen, then I think we need to do something about it.
Thank you. Dr. Minnan?
I do not support any anarchy or violence against policemen of any kind, I think it's a principle.
Thank you, let, let's squeeze in, and we might get some that are a little more narrowly focused on, on trustee issues as they address. Steven?
Well, I wanna thank you all for your time, and before I ask this question, I'm gonna go ahead and check my privilege, because you know I'm a white male, so, I'm really concerned about the embrace of the soft totalitarianism that you all are okay with. You said you're for free speech zones, or for hate speech not being allowed, but the whole concept behind the protections of the First Amendment is to allow for that hateful speech. Two gentlemen behind the board here have probably been called worse things than I would be allowed to say in my house when I was growing up. I've certainly been called many things when I was in the Navy, because there were several groups that I was in, that I was the minority. We all live with it, we all deal with it. We're raising our children to be little snowflakes.
There is a question, Steven?
There is.
There you go.
Question is, between that and the fact that you are concerned about safety, where does it stop? Should we just put our children in little bubbles and not allow them to ever experience anything beyond that? What, as a trustee, do you see the role of a college expanding minds without yet tailoring what is the only things they can experience?
I, I think, I'll paraphrase for Steven, be careful. We're going back to the free speech issue, hate speech was discussed with, from three of you, so perhaps, who, who determines what hate speech is, and, and is there any control of that from the trustees? That, that is a concern, obviously, who determines what hate speech is? Is that fair?
That'll work.
The only thing I would say is, and I'm always, I won't speak up, but I think the thing that we, we need to be, as a college, is trying to develop a variety and, and enrich students' experience here. And so I think, you know, that's, and that, and that, and that takes a lot of, it takes a lot of education, a lot of discussion, and I think that we have to, we need to be trying to develop great students, and enriching them so that they can go out and be great citizens of society.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Uh, we're gonna give them an opportunity, if they want to answer, to address that or not, it's your choice. Ms. Chambers? Okay, no problem, Dr. Minnan. Yes, Ms. Worsman?
Yes, I'll, I'll answer that.
Yes, ma'am.
I think hate speech is really a very cruel concept, you know, a speech that really offends or insults or promotes, and just, if it offends people and insults people, definitely can deal with it, if it threatens people because of their race, color, creed, nationality, if these people are actually physically threatened, or in some other way, seriously, you know, a serious, that's what I would want. That, that's when we start saying, oh, maybe we ought to, I wouldn't say restrict it, but we ought to at least discuss where it's coming from, and see if we can do something about changing the minds of people that we feel are hated, and understand that point.
Thank you very much. Dr. Minnan, do you like to add?
I'm just going to say that Collin College is a student and community-centered institution committed to developing skills, strengthening character, or challenging the intellect. That is our mission, and as long as we're true to our mission, I think we should allow differences of opinion, we, we certainly should allow the young minds to explore, you know, as long as it's true to our mission, and we keep civility in place and dignity for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, I caught Mr. Cordina's eye, you'd ask this, let, yeah, fire away.
Short question, short question. Second question was asked this evening had to do with the fact that a lot of students don't know anything about their government nor about their leaders. Right? All of you agree to that. Now, my question to you is this, what are you gonna do, if you're elected to this position, to enhance your visibility to the student body, so the student body knows who these elected officials are that are guiding this institution?
Good question to finish. Let's talk to you, Dr. Minnan.
Thank you, thank you, Joe, great question. You know, I have made it my business over the last three months and three days to be at every possible event that I could possibly be at, I'm a very accessible person, and I try to be in front of students as well as the community. You know, I'm very proud to be probably, well, definitely the first Indian-American, you know, in Collin County, or to be on the board of trustees at Collin College, and I want to be a, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get a big head here, but not a beacon, but I wanna be a role model for a lot of people to say, yes, you need to get involved, and this is about service to the community. The main reason I'm, you know, in this job is because I believe in servant leadership, and I believe in engaging in the political process. So, I'm out there, every opportunity I get in front of students, I talk to every, every student I can, and, and that's how I advocate, thank you.
Go into Ms. Worsman or Ms. Worsman?
Oh, um, I think we do need to meet with the students, the students do need to know who we are, as I said, I remember when I was running for office the first time, it was, it was really enlightening to me to speak with the students, and to know what they were thinking, and, and the thing that was, all that's new is that they can vote, and I think that we, and as candidates and candidates, as Dr. Minnan said, as certain leaders, it's, it's up to us to not just on the college campus, but to serve as role models for the community, for the younger, younger people in the community, to, to teach them what it means to, to serve the community.
I learned my greatest lessons at the University of Texas at Austin, and very few of those lessons were actually in the classroom. I became very active in student government, I was president of the Education Council there, I was secretary of the cabinet of college councils, I was every organization that I could be, and, and I learned so much. I, I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't know what community service was until I went to college, and it was through that experience that I learned how important it is, and that was a big seed planted for me to be at this table today. So, I would say, one of my biggest advocates, big enough, I'm president of Plenig's Leadership, I am all about developing students to become leaders, and so I would say that I would be a great advocate for the student governments here. I'm thrilled to be here, but I'm gonna tell you how excited I was to get the invitation from the student government to be a part of their forum. I felt like that was a place that I feel very comfortable and very excited about, and so I think those kinds of interactions and engagements are critically important, and something that I'd be very enthusiastic to be, become a part of.
I'd say I have a history of being active and involved in, in all the organizations I've been in, and so I would be, I'd certainly be accessible, and so I would, I would, I would have the same kind of a, a, a opportunity here. And I think that, you know, as you, the great question that you asked is that maybe, you know, we need to, you know, maybe as trustees, we can have something like a town halls, and where we could be a, a part of that, and we can also invite elected officials to be a part of that. So, maybe there's something that we could go in the direction of, and, and that's, that's possible. So, thanks, thanks, Joe, for that, okay?
Thank you. That concludes our program. Let me add, no, two quick, two quick items. Mr. Fred Moses, Jerry Chambers, well, Fred Moses is running for place one, Jerry Chambers is running for place two, Nancy Worsman is running for place two, and then Dr. Rajman is running for place five unopposed. Some people didn't show up for whatever reasons, and Ms. Worsman made a special effort to join us on Skype, so they're to be particularly... Having said that, I'm sure they would love to talk to you, both tonight and through communications on their Facebook, so thank you so much for being here, give them a round of applause again.